We are. Good morning, everybody. Happy New Year 2023. Some of us liked 2022, like me. So I'm just hanging on to 2022 as long as possible, but optimistic about this one also. I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being conducted as permitted under AB 361 and Board Resolution 2022-10. Today's meeting is presented in a hybrid format, in person at CBWD's Steve Robbins Administration Building and via Zoom. Members of the public may participate in person or via Zoom. Zoom details are listed on the meeting agenda, and the meeting is also streamed live on the district's website and YouTube channel. Members of the public who wish to comment on any item on the agenda or within the jurisdiction of the district will have three minutes. Public comment may be provided in person via Zoom or by emailing the clerk of the board. Such comments will become part of the board meeting record. And if you're on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature so that we can see that you are interested in speaking. We have all of our directors who are in attendance are in person. Director Estrada will not be attending today, as far as I know. So we'll do everything in IRL, right? In real life. Except for people attending, but we won't have any directors attending online. Yeah. So we don't need to do the roll call votes. I'm not young or anything. I'm not sure if IRL is the right... Okay, so...
You're fine, John.
That's for young people.
Nobody's jumping to their feet to correct you, so.
If this is out of order, sorry. I'd like to officially call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors. It's January 10, 2023, here in Palm Desert. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the product of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call, please.
Good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada is absent and will be noted as so for the meeting. Director Bianco.
Here.
Thank you. Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you so much.
Great. So we do have a quorum, and nice to see everybody. It's been a little while. Do we have any additions, deletions, or adjustments to today's agenda?
No, sir, not to my knowledge.
Not to mine either. Is there anybody from the public wishing to comment at this time? And we will have opportunities to comment as individual items come up. But if there's public comment of a general nature, now would be the time.
I don't see any on Zoom, but I will just do a final call. Please use the raise hand feature if you're interested in providing general comment at this time.
There does not appear to be anybody in the chamber.
Nope. And then on Zoom at this time.
Very well. Next page. This brings us to employee recognitions. We have two retirements. Tina Merrill with 25 years and Mary Seichy with eight years, who will not be in attendance. But we do have Tina here with us. We have a little presentation. Tina Merrill started her 25-year career at CBWD in 1997, working in the customer billing department. In 1999, she was promoted to Accounts Payable, where she was part of a very efficient team that kept our vendors honest and the district bills paid on time. In 2011, Tina was promoted to a purchasing technician and took the new challenge with enthusiasm. Tina's background was a huge benefit coming into the purchasing group. She learned many facets of the procurement world and excelled in many areas. Tina is hardworking, dependable, cost-conscious, and has impeccable ethics and is always willing to go the extra mile for the district, the staff, and her coworkers. The procurement and contracts manager has received numerous compliments from staff during her 11 years in procurement and developed good relationships with our vendors. Tina's been a huge asset to the purchasing department and CBWD even up to her last day. Is that today? Is it yesterday? In her retirement, Tina and her husband Brad look forward to traveling cross-country, spending more time with family, trips to the beach, and whatever else comes her way. Tina is grateful and appreciative of the opportunities that CBWD has given her over the last 25 years and beyond. So congratulations on 25 years. And come on up.
We're here in the middle. No hiding. So that's me here.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure and an honor to serve CBWD for 25 years. I'm going to miss it, but it's time for each other. It's an awesome organization. I tell all the new people.
They believe you.
Thank you guys very much. It's been a pleasure. Everybody, all of them. My family and myself.
Well, now we go do some fun and come back and tell us about it.
I will. I'm already on that journey.
April 1st. April 1st? We're having a mission dinner?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Very good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Consent Calendar, items 6A through E.
Mr. President, I had a question on item D. I'm not sure this should go to... Good morning. Can you just talk for a brief minute about the finding?
Yes. Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
The one finding that's noted in the report was relating to a joint benefits project relating to the canal. I think it was a concrete lining improvement that involved the city of La Quinta and one developer. And so each had a cost portion that they were contributing. And our mistake, because it was a multi-year project, was to book as our asset the full amount, even though we were being reimbursed for portions of it. And so because the reimbursements came in later years, we didn't reduce... Normally, we net it. So just what's on our books is just our part of the asset. And so that was a mistake. It was a relatively simple error, but multi-year. And because it was a joint benefit project, it slipped by. And we've already corrected the procedures to be able to look for that going forward. But that was the one finding.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the explanation. I have another question. I'll move the approval of the consent calendar.
It was before your time, right?
Yes.
Yeah, of course.
But you fixed it.
You left that part out.
I'm your predecessor.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passed 4-0. Onto the action calendar. 8A. We... Every couple of years, we kind of just take a look at committee assignments. The assignments approved in January of 2021 were included in the packet. Board members had an opportunity to express preferences for changes, pluses and minuses, et cetera. I'm not aware of any changes that are requested at this time. If you have any, please... Now is a good time to speak up. I did have the one... Peter, I don't know if you... I know you've been attending the Seaville meetings, and you're not listed on there. Do you want to add that?
Oh, yeah. Go ahead and put me on there.
Check that box.
A board member, so.
I know. So I figured you... So we can add you to Seaville.
Okay.
I'm on there also.
Yeah. I sent you an email about the Salt and Sea Authority. I have a conflict of interest, not for being on the board, just on the timing portion. I have something else that fits in that exact same time. So I think Director Aguilar was willing to take that spot.
I am, yes.
Okay. So we'll... And you're currently an officer, right, with Salt and Sea?
No.
You're not? You're not an officer? Okay. So we can...
I got off of that, so I'd make it easier.
Yeah, good. We'll...
Okay.
So we'll subtract Director Bianco and add Director Aguilar to Salt and Sea Authority.
And Mr. President, if I can clarify for the Seaville, will Director Nelson be an alternate? Or will we have two actual appointments to...
It'll be two.
Okay.
Yeah.
John, I had another question.
Yes.
On page three, where it talks about the board committee assignments listing, and these are meetings that any board member can attend when they're noticed. For example, the Torres Martinez Desert Cohea Wetlands Committee, are those as needed? And are we notified when these take place? I'm just curious what the protocol is.
Good question. I mean, that one may have been placed on there when Director Levasay was with us. And I haven't heard about the meeting.
I don't know that we receive notifications, but if you have an interest, we can certainly reach out.
Yeah.
No, we don't have an interest?
I don't think it... Yeah.
Oh, it doesn't exist.
That one may not exist. Yeah.
Okay. Just take that off the list.
We could probably just cross that out.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't... I'm not aware of it existing either.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
But if there is any of the other committees on here that you would like, I can go through our notification and see if we receive notices. And if so, I'm happy to share those with you.
Oh, great. Thank you.
All right. So we're going to add Director Nelson and Seaville, and then we're going to subtract Director Bianco and add Director Aguilar to Salt and Sea Authority. And do we need to formalize this with...
Yes.
I'll make that motion for those two changes.
I'll second those changes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passed 4-0.
And we will take care of notifying Salt and Sea Authority of the change in membership.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good morning, Carrie.
Next is... Ah.
Hi, Carrie. Good morning.
Engineering, 8B. Go ahead.
8B. Okay. So this is to authorize the general manager to award a construction contract to Chafee Construction in the amount of $545,500 for the replacement of three hydromatic tanks. And then there are soft costs in the amount of about $80,000. So the total comes to $625,300. So we set this project up. We were... It's in the budget, but it was only in the budget for $200,000. We thought we were going to replace two tanks. We did set the bid up so that we had a third tank as an alternate. And we are able to do a budget amendment to transfer money from another project to cover the other $425,000. If that is... I mean, that is our recommendation, but there is the flexibility to just do one tank or two tanks if the board would rather do that. All three of these tanks, though, are, you know, in dire need of replacement. Two of them were put in in 1980. The other one was put in in 1962. So they're an integral part of operating a hydromatic booster pump station. So anyways, I'm happy to go further into the presentation or take any questions.
Given the pressure that these tanks contain, is there a risk to human safety with the age?
There is. And actually, two of them have been disconnected, basically. They're being bypassed. And what happens then is that the pumps tend to run more frequently or more continuously. So there is an increase in electrical costs when you do that, because, you know, these tanks help to not only modify the pressure or sustain the pressure, but they're also there to hold water so that when you have low-flow situations, you know, the water just draws from the tank so that the pumps don't have to run continuously.
Right.
I'd move approval.
So you're asking we can do it two ways. We can take it from reserves, or we can take it from another project. So I would be inclined to take it from another project.
Okay. Yeah. And that's what we propose. We're proposing to take it from the Adams Street Water Main Replacement Project that was budgeted this year for $5 million. However, we've awarded that contract, but we're not going to spend that much money this year because the materials and getting the 24-inch diameter pipe is going to take a few months. So.
Okay. So I'd move approval of staff's recommendation.
Right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
That passed 4-0. Thanks, Carrie. Onto C.
All right. Good morning, President Powell.
Yeah, go ahead.
Board of Recers. Elmer Alex, Assistant Director of Engineering Services and Planning. The item I have for your consideration is to approve and authorize the general manager to execute the Joint Community Facilities Agreement between CBWD and NCP Murano for the Murano development and execute related documents to the agreement. Would the board like a presentation of the agreement? Or are there any questions on it?
I don't necessarily need one.
No, I don't either. I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Okay. Thanks. So there's a motion and a second to approve this item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed 4-0. Well, Elmer, you got off easy.
Dodged that bullet.
Onto 8D. This is just to approve the general manager to execute the non-potable water agreement with Southwest Community Church. I didn't see anything unusual in this. Normal. Happy New Year.
Hi. Happy New Year.
You're leaving so quickly.
Olivia Bennett, Non-Potable Water Operations Manager. And yes, this is a non-potable water agreement with Southwest Community Church. We're asking the board to approve and authorize the general manager to execute the non-potable water agreement for Southwest Community Church. They're domestic water customers, so it's slightly different. They don't own a well, but they are in the West Rack and would pay the Type A rate.
I'm surprised they don't have a well. Did we already do the agreements with the Tennis Garden and Palm Royale?
Palm Royale, yes. Tennis Gardens, not yet.
It's in the works? Yeah, okay.
Yep. They would be served by a warp 10's high-pressure line. It's currently going in hopefully. And there's going to be a branch that goes down Warner Trail that would reach those three customers.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I'll move approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing no motion, Carrie's 4...
Thank you.
Oh. Thank you, Olivia. 8E. Why, we are moving along here.
Sorry, Adam.
Money. All right, Adam, go ahead. We need more money.
Okay. Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. My name's Adam McWay, Acting Conservation Manager. And I'm here today to request an increase to the conservation program payments budget in the amount of $5 million for a total budget of $10.85 million. So this appropriation will be funded by drought penalty revenues that can offset costs associated with conservation. So just an update on that. Between September 1 and December 30, 2022, just over $7.6 million has been assessed in drought penalties. I do have a quick update kind of on the turf conversion program to update the BAI. So through December 2022, the midway point in the fiscal year, we've completed 495 turf conversion projects, which have resulted in the removal of just over 1.5 million square feet of turf. So through the end of December, $4,665,739 has been expended on the turf removal program. And an additional, currently, $6,8472 is reserved for projects that have been approved following a pre-site inspection. So that brings the total that has been paid or approved after inspection to $10,674,211. As I said, this request will increase the total conservation program payments budget to $10.85. So that leaves a balance of about $175,789 upon approval of this item. So as a result, staff's also asking for direction how the board would like to proceed with the program. So we could stop accepting applications. Right now, that reserve number doesn't include projects where we haven't completed the pre-site, so we have two, three weeks of inspections scheduled. Or we could increase today's request of funding request from five up to 7.5. That would provide about 2.5... Just over 2.5 million available for future projects. And then return to the board when the budget is close to 100% reserved. Or we could continue in a similar fashion to what we've done to date, which is approving projects and reserving funds and return to the board when close to the budget is actually spent rather than just reserved. So that does result in us reserving, approving funds greater than the budgeted amount. We are still on track or still estimate to receive somewhere between $16 million to $20 million in drought penalty revenue for the fiscal year. And that's my update.
Are you assuming that we're going to keep the drought penalties for this whole next year?
So the drought penalties are part of the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, which the executive order required us to enter at least stage two. And I don't anticipate that executive order being rescinded anytime soon.
At least the state hasn't notified us that that's going to be the case. I mean, there's two emergencies declared right now. One for flood, one for drought. I just listened to Carla Namath the other day explain to Wade Crowfoot that it's a rather unique situation that we're in. But until the governor, I guess, revisits the emergency order, we are under state regulations, the state requirements, to continue the drought penalties.
I'm just wondering if all the reservoirs fill up to 100%, which they may. Okay? I mean, then he may not have a justification for...
Right. That's his call.
It's probably a couple of months away, though. I mean, there's no hint that they're going to do it soon.
The problem in the past is...
It wouldn't be before April.
Probably not, because in the past, February's been very dry. And we've lost all the gains we make in December and January.
And even if the Northern California reservoirs fill up, we still have two reservoirs on the Colorado that are pretty dry. And so even if we have state water project water, we have a certain management, you know, actions that we're going to need to take water out of the Colorado system. So it's, you know, I think it's a little dicey to say that, well, if we got a 50% allocation on the state water project, that, you know, we're in great shape. We can get rid of the emergency declaration. But, you know, the long and short of it is that, you know, we're facing some really serious potential lack of recharge of our aquifer. And so I think we should really proceed with the abundance of caution in that regard.
You know, my gut on this, Adam, is to increase the amount and do a press release and keep pushing our conservation programs. That's how I feel about it.
So increase the request to 7.5?
I mean, I don't think there's any risk that we won't have those funds available. It doesn't sound like it.
No, I would anticipate that we'd at least... So at least have 2.5, collecting an additional 2.5 in drought penalties.
So why not? Why not just go all in? And... That's how I feel. Do seven and a half and a press release.
Well, all in would be collecting the extra $16 million you think we'll get to the end of the fiscal year.
We can do this again. We can do this again. I mean, I think there is some uncertainty about things, but...
Yes.
But, you know, rather than sort of just putting in just enough to cover what we've already done, let's keep going. That's how I feel about it.
And you mentioned in your memo of explanation the possibility of proposing new conservation programs in the future. So have you given any thought to what this might look like?
Well, so we've been communicating with CalWeb primarily on what we've updated the board on before, trying to develop a partnership to provide the RACIO controllers or Flume controllers at discounted rates to the customers. And so we've been working through some complications with Flume on compatibility with our meter population. And so that's primarily what we've been looking at to date.
Thank you. So, Adam, I'd like to walk through the finances just for a little bit. With the... Are we going to do five or seven and a half million?
I was proposing seven and a half. I haven't made a motion yet.
All right. So if we do the seven and a half million, how many square feet of turf will that affect?
First calculator?
Oh, this is your trick.
That'd be...
I'm going to type it in.
Five by three.
Yeah. I have a calculator, but... So how many square feet will that seven million, seven and a half million take out of...
That'd be 2.5.
2.5.
Million square feet.
Million square feet. So how many acres is that?
By 40.
So...
So 2... Divided by 4, 3, 5, 6, 0, right?
What you're doing is not a good exercise.
That's 57 acres, right? Is that what you get?
57 acre feet.
I don't have the conversion for acres.
Well, if you did 2.5 million square feet...
Acres, right. And then figure there's... What do you save? Three acres?
Whoa, whoa, whoa. No. Divided by... I'm going to get acres.
You got the acres.
So divided by 4, 3, 5, 6, 0. It's 57 acres.
Seven acres of turf.
Okay.
And, and we're gonna say how much per square foot or per acre?
So we estimate that the savings is 55.8 gallons a year per square foot of turf removed.
So you just did it a little differently. I think where he's trying to go to.
It's like three acre feet, isn't it?
It's 3.8 under IWA for agriculture. And we typically say that residential irrigation is, is a little less or a little more efficient. I can't remember which.
Well, I think the, the turf's using probably at least six acre feet, but then you're going to replace it with something that's still used.
So the estimate is based, or we estimate our savings of, on the turf removal program based on a study Las Vegas Waterhead done. And so that, what their study found was that turf use about 73 gallons per square foot, whereas a converted landscape was down to 17.2 gallons per square foot. And that's where we come up with that 55.8 gallons per square foot saved annually, or yeah, saved annually per square foot of turf removed.
I know, we're, we're trying to get cost per acre foot.
So what we've done, so what I had, what we calculate was around 1,750 dollars per acre foot. The cost per acre.
I'm sorry, one?
1,750 dollars per acre foot. And that's if you aggregate that over a 10-year period.
10-year period, so 17,000 dollars an acre foot for, for the first year divided by, if you just say 10 years, that'd be 1,700 dollars an acre foot. So I wonder if we should ask Robert the question, if he could go out and buy Table A water at 1,700 dollars an acre foot today?
I don't think anybody's selling Table A water right now, but we can't even get the water we had agreed to from Rosedale Rio Bravo.
Right.
Which was somewhere in the neighborhood of 750 dollars.
It's expensive.
It's expensive, but, but I, I don't think you could get Table A water for under four, $5,000 an acre foot.
Per year?
Per year.
Uh, Robert, do you really want to come down?
No, I know. We've done this calculation. I mean, it's, it's really expensive.
It's expensive.
But it's also the water that's right under our nose.
Exactly.
It's already here.
For sustainability purposes.
Right.
Recognizing imported water may not be as reliable as it has in the past. We do have the requirement to balance our puts and takes from the aquifer. So anything we can do to reduce the demand, reduce the amount we pull out is, makes sense long-term.
Yeah, it is a long-term effort or long-term result.
Robert wants to come.
Expensive.
Hey, Robert. You called him down.
Good morning. Yeah, so there wasn't a lot of transfer water available last year. And this year, we're still at 5% allocation, you know, to President Powell's point, even though, you know, the Northern, Northern California is flooding in some conditions. But unfortunately, you know, some of that water's not making it all the way down reservoir. It becomes outflow, you know, for the environment. You know, had the Delta Conveyance Project, you know, been in play, I think we could have, you know, taken opportunity, taken opportunity to capture a lot of that water. But having said that, right now, the state water contractors are, you know, have been convening a group of, you know, buying, willing buyers and sellers together. There's not a lot of market right now. I would say, you know, I think Director Nelson's assessment is correct. It's definitely in the thousands of dollars per acre foot. You know, what, what little there is. And again, I think to echo General Manager Barrett's comment, there is no Rosedale Rio Bravo water for this year, that, as far as we can see. So that is sort of the state of play. I know the golf, you know, golf course conversions are, I'm sorry, not golf course, I've got a different thought in mind, but conservation efforts typically are, you know, a little bit more expensive, but you're right, it is more durable and, you know, a little bit more long-lasting for investment.
Well, I'll make a motion if there's not a better idea.
I will second.
So I'll move that we change the, thanks, Robert, that we change the staff, or the, the motion to seven and a half million instead of five that's in the staff recommendation and couple that with a press release to encourage more participation in our programs.
Yeah, I second that.
I think Peter's seconded that. I had a quick question, John. So where, where are we with La Quinta and their participation in this program?
So my understanding is I believe they had a study session to discuss the possibility of collaboration, and I have not heard of any updates since that study session. So we haven't heard.
Oh, Victoria.
So for the city of La Quinta, as Adam was saying, they have held a study session, I believe in November, or actually, excuse me, in October. We haven't heard since. They did ask us for some data which Waterman had provided, and we've been in contact with them. I actually just saw their Director of Planning last Thursday, but they are still kind of in limbo. I do know that some of their counsel is in favor of a partnership with us, but at this time, it's kind of a holding pattern.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay, anything else? Well, let's go to the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're at past 4-0.
Thanks, Adam. Thanks, Victoria.
We did have quite a list of written communications that were provided. I see there's a.
We did, Mr. President. We actually had an update to one of them. The, there was one that had showed as pending and it was actually resolved, I believe, after the posting of the agenda. So we did distribute a revised communication log to the board.
Okay, I, I see that on the very last one.
The very last one, correct.
Yeah. Let's see, we, we have an information, a presentation today on our federal affairs and advocacy team. Looking backwards and looking forwards, I think, something like that.
Through the looking glass.
Come on up.
The red pill or the blue pill?
Good morning.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. Today, all the way from Washington DC, we have with us our federal affairs and advocacy team. So we have Anna Schwab and Lowry Crook, and also in the audience, we have Samantha Sable, who also joined the federal affairs team. And so before I pass it over, very brief, as we talked about, red pill, blue pill, they'll provide a year-end review of their efforts and, and some of our accomplishments within the federal realm, as well as an outlook for the 118th Congress that recently got started. So with that, Anna, Lowry.
Thank you. Thanks, Victoria. Good morning, everybody. Thank you so much for having us. Happy New Year. We will try to make it not as chaotic as Alice looking through the glass, but I can't promise the 118th Congress isn't getting off to that start on its own accord. So we'll start with where we were. And I'm Anna Schwab, Lowry Crook, and as, as Victoria said, Samantha Sable joined our team this past summer.
Anna, just a minute, please.
Yes.
John, did you have a question? I thought you.
I did not.
I'm sorry, I thought you were trying to bust in there, my bad.
No, it's perfect.
No, no, we're good. Go ahead.
So let me just, hold on, press the button.
I was giving you time to get the slides going.
There we go. So here's just a very brief agenda, but please ask questions, you know, throughout if anything comes up that you'd like us to talk further about. So looking at the 117th Congress that spanned the last two years, we're going to be focusing primarily on what we had as successes in the last year. We also provided a similar report at the end of the year previous. But over the last two years during this last Congress, these just kind of highlight, what are some of the things that BBK has been doing for CBWD as we look at things? General federal advocacy that spans both Congress and our regulatory agencies, working on what are the priorities and goals as you had approved in the last, or in one of your last board meetings in December, the federal policy principles for this new term, very similar, we had worked on that with your team previously for the 117th Congress. Looking at, you know, where do we see, how do we navigate, how do we maneuver and ensure that those policies and goals that you all had set forth and prioritized are achieved? So we look through and these are all things that we, we work on, including, you know, the federal funding opportunities to help advance other projects and goals that the district has. So based on the 2021, 2022 policy platform, these are a chunk, I would say, of that policy platform that we really had as focus in the last Congress, just based on what was Congress doing and also what was the federal agencies doing. They both dictated how we were and what the priorities were. So these are ones that you'll see some crossover from the last policy principles to what you all approved for this coming year, or I guess we're in it now, because these are things that are maintained. They, they're part of the backbone of how we help advance and where we see some of these goals for the district moving through. So obviously, the local water, local control of water resources, protecting your ability to operate efficiency, efficiently, local and imported water supplies, definitely a really big one. You know, obviously, as we see the irony of flood and drought right now, but it's not lost on us that we still have to work on all of these things simultaneously, as well as some tax measures that we've been working on, working on as well affordability, facility, facility improvements, the Salton Sea, and then PFAS. So it's hard to put into just a single PowerPoint slide what we saw as some of our successes in the last term, but we tried to really highlight just a few here, and you have a written report as well that goes into depth onto a few more. But these are just some of them, and it's, it's been, one that's been very interesting to navigate, because some of these, on their face, we think they make a lot of sense, there's really good policy here, they should be easy to navigate. But unfortunately, as I think you all know, Washington DC can get in the way of its own self sometimes, so even if it's a good idea, it can make it really complicated. So we have, you have to change which dance steps you're using sometimes to be able to navigate them. So in the last year, we've seen some really big advances on the nationwide permits with the Army Corps of Engineers, which Lowry can talk a little bit more about if you guys have any questions on those. Looking at, you know, we, we were at the height of the pandemic during this last term as well, and so how do we maintain operations, ensure that the district, as a special district, was being advocated for before Congress for its own protections and ability to continue during that time? The Colorado River, the drought generally facing the Western United States and the Colorado River Basin, the low-income water wastewater affordability program, LIWAP, you may mostly know it as, previously was a lie heap, that program still exists, that's the low-income housing energy protection affordability program, excuse me. And what they did was they created the LIWAP program, which then went through and made it so that that similar affordability questions are now supported for those who need it for water and wastewater. And then support and secure authorizations for water infrastructure funding programs, we can talk a little bit more about those if you guys have specific questions, but we saw some really big successes, we have another slide on those, as well as Salton Sea restoration. Lowry, anything additional in here? Okay, just jump in. So here's some of the funding successes. It's, it's kind of fun to talk about the numbers. You know, these are just a few. We saw a Bureau of Reclamation for the Warp 10 project that was announced at the end, or I guess towards the end of last year, coming in over 12 million dollars. Community project funding, this is one I'd really want to focus on, because this was new for Congress to come back with. Congress did not have earmarks for over a decade, and they got rid of the word earmarks. They seem to make that, you know, concession to themselves, and they called it community project funding in the House, congressionally-directed spending in the Senate. They couldn't agree on a single name, that's okay. But CBWD has been incredibly, has been in a great position with Congressman Ruiz's support this term, just so everybody knows, you are represented by both Congressman Ruiz and Congressman Calvert, we'll talk a little bit about that. But these two awards were really prioritized by Congressman Ruiz. They also were supported by Senator Padilla and Senator Feinstein. So we see incredibly strong support from the congressional delegation for CBWD and what you have all been putting forward. These are particularly of interest because, one, the program was new, so how they were going about it, everyone was still figuring out. But two, the members had only a few requests they could put forward. So in the House, for instance, they had 15 million dollars that each member was allotted, and they could only put forward requests and they couldn't exceed that. So to be able to receive support of 2.7 million dollars and 3.5 million dollars in two separate requests, 3.5 was the maximum you could get. And so that's just a really, really strong sign of support from our members and our congressional delegation, that two years in a row, they're wanting to support CBWD, its goals, and supporting the communities and the community infrastructure you all are trying to provide. So that was a big one as well.
I, I just want to add that last year or so, I mean, we were fortunate to have a combination of both the bipartisan infrastructure law passed with historic funding for water. In addition, frankly, your team, your engineering team, the relationship with the agencies and having projects ready to go, that we were able to coordinate with the delegation and get the strong support to take advantage of both the new, you know, return of earmarks and also the bipartisan infrastructure, aging infrastructure with the Bureau of Reclamation and their Title 16 program. So it was just a good confluence, a great work by the broader team with some, you know, window of opportunity for these infrastructure funds.
Absolutely.
So Anna Lowry, on that, so the 12 million, if you can go back, the 12 million from the Bureau of Reclamation on the infrastructure finance.
That's the Title 16 application that CBWD had done in the past, but because we were helped by the fact that that was an order of magnitude larger this time because of the bipartisan infrastructure law, and so our, the, the team's application was successful this time in securing the 12 million dollars.
Okay, and the community funding, the project funding, where does that come from?
That comes from, so Congress puts it into what's called the STAG program, the State Tribal Assistance Grants Program run through the EPA. So it technically becomes part of what we all know as the SRF program.
Yeah.
But it doesn't go into the general SRF pot. It is basically taken off the top of the SRF program before it's sold out to the states.
Okay.
Great, thanks.
So looking at the 118th Congress, we, as I said, you know, they got off to their own Alice looking through the glass and Mad Hatter Tea Party, and hopefully, hopefully things will calm down. They were able to pass the House rules, which there was question if they would be able to because of how chaotic the beginning of their support was or was not. So as we see coming into the new Congress, you'll see overlap in some of the things that we talked about were priorities from the 117th Congress. These are directives from your policy principles that you all approved from the, in December. But we highlighted a few here to really talk about where we see these developing and want to kind of dive into a couple overall. Obviously, the Colorado River is going to continue to be a big, big focus, there's just no escaping that. The House Natural Resources Committee Chairman now, Congressman Westerman, was actually in Southern California with Congressman Calvert, believe it was in December, was it December or November? Oh, October, I've lost months. But he came out because he wants to learn about the, the Colorado River. He doesn't know it himself, it's not pertinent to his congressional district, but as Chairman of the House Natural Resources Committee, it is important and it is a key. And he came out and hosted a luncheon with senior stakeholders that the Congressman wanted to make sure were there, and he wanted and was very, very adamant that CBWD was represented at that luncheon, and we're very grateful that Scott and Victoria were able to attend. And the Congressman Calvert wanted to also educate Chairman Westerman on what the Colorado River is, because it is going to come before his committee probably right off the bat. I would almost guarantee we'll start seeing things once they do their organizational meetings, because it is key. You also still have ranking member Rahalva from Arizona in, as ranking member on the committee. So we will continue to obviously look through that and how they're looking at conservation, both, and then as well as the quality and salinity, and as well as their post 2026 agreements, those will come before Congress as well. Obviously, that's looking beyond our 2022 and 2023 policy principles and what we're looking at for the 118th Congress, but they're going to start talking about them now. So definitely something to be looking at as we're going through. Another item, which we don't talk too much about tax issues and not normally something that we see, but it is really, really important, something we worked on last Congress, we were very close to, in the last Congress, it was the water conservation rebate tax, and this was something that was in what was President Biden's Build Back Better Plan. However, that plan, as you all may know, didn't really come to fruition as it's whole, as it was originally intended. So pieces of that did move through, and we do have support from our congressional delegation as well as the chief sponsor of that provision, who is Congresswoman Chu up in the San Gabriel foothills. So we are hoping to see that be able to move through in this next Congress. There certainly will be a tax bill from the Republican House. The question will be, will the Democrat Senate take it up? Anything on those few so far?
Yeah, just on, on exempting conservation, water conservation from taxes, it was, as Anna mentioned, it was in Build Back Better, it made it until the last sort of ending when, with Senator Manchin, when that happened last summer, a lot of the tax provisions fell out of that. So we do have the support of our entire congressional delegation on other standalone bills, and so we'll just look for a vehicle for this next Congress to, to hopefully get it over the line this time.
Looking at water affordability as well as federal funding for infrastructure, I'll combine them just for purposes of this, which is, we know that in the Republican House, they are going to try to tighten belts in a lot of areas. So our goal is to ensure that the programs that you all care about and utilize for your district is that they are protected. So that includes the LIWAP program, that includes Title 16, it includes SRF, it includes other programs, the Bureau of Reclamation and EPA as well. That's going to be our primary goal. While the Senate will likely want to advance higher numbers or at least increases in certain areas, we want to make sure that especially in the House, that those funds are not zeroed out to make up for dollars in other areas. So we're going to be really working on preservation in terms of these accounts for the next, especially for FY '24, which we'll be heading into negotiations on in the next probably eight weeks here with the President's budget, I think expected early February.
Late February, yeah.
Late February, excuse me. So looking as well, so we are going to continue working on support for general California water infrastructure, including sites reservoir and the Delta Conveyance Project. We're going to continue working on things that regard the Salton Sea, big priority of Congressman Ruiz. He's advanced a number of bills on the Salton Sea, and so we know that it definitely won't maintain a priority for him in this Congress as well. And looking at. And looking at ways, I'm going to skip PFAS for a second, and then looking at ways to ensure that when the district is awarded grants, that it is efficient and that it is ways for the programs to be used as well as looking for ways to speed up the process. Sometimes the agencies again can kind of get in the way of themselves and it takes quite a while for the district to be able to use the funds. And that can cause troubles and delays for the district in advancing those projects. I'll come back to PFAS here, which is, that's going to prove to be quite a battle. It has already, it is one that we are going to continue to work on. There is great debate in terms of what are the exemptions? It's not that we don't want PFAS to be cleaned up. It's that who has to pay for it really becomes the responsibilities. It's these questions of liabilities of citizen suits as well as pressure from other potentially responsible parties, including the companies, the big companies, who are responsible for the contaminations. So we're going to continue working on that and we can really dive into it further if you'd like. But we want to make sure, you know, big goal is that the cleanups and the responsibilities aren't done on the backs of the ratepayers of those in the district and making sure that you all have the opportunity to obviously clean it up and maintain what your responsibilities are, but not have to do it at the cost of your ratepayers as well. So we've been working really diligently with trade associations and the congressional delegations at large and the committees to see how we can navigate a solution on that. Anything there? So I will end with that and just take questions, both of us. And if there's anything else that you all would like us to take direction from you all, we would love to hear that.
Actually, I have a question. Thank you for the presentation, very thorough. So are there going to be opportunities, do you think, maybe not, given the character of the new Congress, for new earmarks in the new budget?
Yeah, so they did try when they were doing their organizational meeting as a House Republican Congress at the end of last Congress, once the majority had been determined, they did try to vote to remove the earmarks. They were not successful in doing so and we know the Senate is going to continue them. The question will be, do they lower the cap maybe? Like what, we don't know what the specifics of the program will be, but we know that they were not able to zero that one out.
Okay, so do we have like a list of projects that would be ready to be submitted or where do we stand with that?
So that is something that we will work with Victoria Scott as well as Carrie and the engineering team on identifying what project would be a good application to put forward. We do have the opportunity to submit to both Congressman Ruiz and Congressman Calvert as well as our two senators.
Oh, awesome, great, that's good news, thank you.
Yeah, that process, there'll be a call for, you know, candidates usually late February, early March, when the budget and appropriations process kicks off and the delegation. I think last year they had 15 projects per member of the House that they could recommend and we were fortunate enough to get in that list. And so we'll be working with your team to develop that candidate list.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Maybe for Victoria, nominally, do we have an idea of where the boundary between Calvert and Ruiz falls?
Yes, so Congressman Calvert extends all the way to La Quinta. And then Ruiz starts up in India. And so, and so Calvert has the whole western side of the Coachella Valley. And so that's really the divide there with Ruiz extending all the way east to Blythe and down to San Diego.
So it's not quite Washington like it is with a couple others.
It's not quite Washington, no, but he has the whole of La Quinta.
Okay, thanks.
And we did meet with Congressman Calvert when Victoria was back in the spring, when we knew the lines were different. And the Congressman since has expressed great interest in the district and supporting the district as well. So we have a very good open line there in addition to the open line and relationship with Congressman Ruiz.
Yeah, I know that Randy Reckert from Eastern Municipal had a very good relationship with Calvert, Congressman Calvert. So I do think that bodes well for water districts in general.
Yes, he has always been a very big supporter of water. He previously served, I think he still serves on the Appropriations Committee for Water. He took the Subcommittee gavel though for Defense, I believe, was the one he had gotten instead. But he still sits on the committee, has always been a big supporter, used to represent the Salt and Sea as well. So he has a long history in the area and is very supportive of the district and its goals.
And if I may, also his dissertation was, is it Salt and Sea or Colorado River?
I think it was on Colorado.
Colorado.
It was on Colorado River.
The salinity of the Colorado River.
Yeah, so he's quite familiar. And we're also working with his staff to facilitate a visit for him to come out to the district, which he's expressed doing, so.
That'd be great, yeah.
Yeah, that is good.
Lowery, so from my perspective, I see coming out of the Salt and Sea Authority, a real, I don't know, it's almost an antagonistic view of what the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation had done with its $250 million, $250 million announcement. But with that being said, do you see any kind of conflict? Or do you see opportunities for the Army Corps to work with the Bureau in terms of Salt and Sea mitigation with what the Army is now doing in its looking at studying alternatives of restoration there at the sea?
I don't see a conflict between what the Bureau having funding and the Army Corps sort of working on a study to hopefully recommend a project that can get federal funding. And the Army Corps, if they do find, you know, land on a project that they can recommend to Congress, if it gets approved, it generally is 65% federally funded. So it would unlock a significant amount of additional federal funding for a solution that they land on with the state. I think that the authorities, I think part of that was that there was a process issue of just when the authority was consulted on before the announcement. And so I think that was some of their reaction to it. And then I think the question of the 250 million, I know there are some conditions on it that they were concerned about as well is just making sure that that money is real and a real investment, I think, is that they're not, they weren't hostile to the idea of there being an investment by the Bureau.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anything else? Okay, well, thank you for the presentation and we look forward to more success with the new Congress.
Thank you all very much.
Brings us to Board, General Comments, Director Nelson.
So we've had a lot of rain in the last two weeks. You know, Orville has gone up about 14% from where it's at. That's our state water project supplies, which is really good. It had been running about 40,000 acre feet of inflows between Shasta and Orville. Just this morning, as the water came in yesterday, 160,000 acre feet of water inflows into those two reservoirs. So that's, you know, just fantastic. Obviously, that's going to come back down as the storm passes. But it's great to see that Orville's now at 46% of capacity with 1.6 million acre feet of 3.5 million acre feet. So that's really good. The eight station is up at a, which is a measure of precipitation up in that Orville area, is 134% of normal. And the snowwater equivalent is a whopping 199% of average to this date. But really what is good is that it is 85% of the April 1st average. So that means there's a fair amount of snow. And so we're all hoping that we don't get the flat February of last year where, you know, the snow sublimated and evaporated off and didn't come down as runoff. So it's always, you know, something to kind of watch for. Colorado is just, the runoff forecast is just above average at 6.99 million acre feet of unregulated inflow into Lake Powell. So that's just above average, which is good. And the snowwater equivalent there is 128%. So it's really good there too. Like I say, though, we just hope that we don't get a flat February. Still having conversations and work, trying to get to a consensus based plan to address the opening of the 2007 Interim Operating Guidelines with the seven basin states. Currently, the modelers are working on modeling what the alternatives could be in that program, trying to operate the rivers to protect lake levels in both Powell and Mead. So that's ongoing. Robert's involved in those conversations from the technical aspect of modeling. And still there's quite a lot of work going on on the policy side as well. There's a series of meetings happening pretty much all week, every week up to January 30th, when the Bureau will be moving forward with either us are looking at the seven basin states consensus alternative, their own alternative, or no action, which I don't think they're going to do a no action plan. So lots going on there. Just as a general comment, you know, with all this happening, it's just really has been a time consuming operation as operating as the Chair of the Colorado River Board. And when I got on the board, instead of having an open ended term for the Chair, we instituted a four year election cycle. And that cycle ends now. And so there's an election coming up at tomorrow's Board. And I have told the CRB staff that I would not be standing for reelection. So there'll be a new Chair of the Colorado River Board. And so it should be an interesting meeting tomorrow. And that's all the comments I have.
Thank you. Do you have an idea who the candidates might be for this Chair?
Yeah, so I've heard expression of interest from Jamie Handby of the Imperial Irrigation District as well as Jim Madaffur from the San Diego County Water Authority.
One other question. 22-year drought on the Colorado River. When they say that it's a percentage of normal or average, are they going back to the prior numbers before the drought? Or are they averaging in these drought years when they?
I believe it's, it's a good question, John, because if you go back all the way to the beginning, it's going to be, if you go back to the early 1900s, it's going to be a wetter. I think this is the 30-year drought. So it'd be 1990 to 2022, which does grab some of the wet years in the 90s. So it's probably a better indicator than going back to 1900.
Yeah, I was just wondering if maybe they take the 30 years prior to the, to the year 2000 or something like that.
Yeah, I'm pretty certain this is 1990 to 2022.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
John, just two things. One is we have new city councils and mayors in some cities. I think it'd be good if we could start to get some of our two by twos back on the books. That'd be great. And then secondly, I did get another text during the meeting that the boardroom is muted. I don't know if it's their end or if it's our end, but I thought I would just pass on one. Thank you.
Nice to hear somebody's watching.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with you on that, two by two. Director Bianco.
No comments.
Just one, wanted to point out, Vice President Estrada is absent today. He's attending the swearing in ceremony of the new Metropolitan Water District Chair, which is Adon Ortega. So I thought I would wish Adon well in his new role and congratulate him. That's all I had.
Mr. President, if I may, I just, staff just checked, we did have an audio issue earlier with Zoom only. The YouTube, the YouTube stream was working correctly. We were down for about five minutes on Zoom, but as far as I know, we tested and we are back on.
Thank you. Are there any board member requests for future agenda items? Hearing none. Let's get into the meetings. Director Nelson, we have the Seven Basin States Framework on the 12th.
So that was a Zoom meeting. Sorry. So that was a Zoom meeting with the Seven Basin States, which were, I talked about the two consensus base. This is a framework of how to move forward at that. And at that meeting, we, that was right before CRUA, and at that meeting, we kind of handed off to the modelers and the technical group to come back to the principles with some real alternatives to look at. So we can see the functionality of the dual reservoir operation and then kind of look at that back from a policy standpoint, so.
Thank you. And then CRUA, the four directors, not everyone but me was there, so how did it go?
It was good. I mean, from my perspective, it was the first major water conference I've been able to attend since having been on the board. It was really informative, a great chance to get to know members from other districts. We had a chance to talk to Lowery as well. And I found it very useful, particularly the one workshop on Law of the River was really good, particularly for somebody like myself who's new. And of course, Peter did an excellent job in his presentation, so it was very useful. I appreciate it and thank Robert for helping to coordinate all of our activities. It was good.
It was probably fuller than I've ever seen it, and I've been to a few of them before. I think what I took away from it, and I kind of feel the same way, is the uncertainty, you know? Everyone talked about, you know, we have an issue here, but nobody knows what's going to happen. And so I think that even if it's, you know, moderate news or bad news, it's just knowing what's to come is better than not knowing, you know? Because even it sounded like, you know, everybody, the people who are in charge, they don't know. So, you know, and everybody's calling the people in charge saying, what can I bank on? And whether you're building homes or you're a city or you're a water district or you're a farmer, nobody knows. So hopefully in the next six months, there'll be some more clarity, I think, some certainty, at least for maybe another year or two.
Yeah. Right, CRB meeting?
Yeah, so at the beginning of the conference, we had our CRB meeting in Las Vegas and we gave some really good district updates of what we've done, kind of year in summary. So Robert, Conservation Team, thanks for putting those together. And I think those were very helpful, had some comments at the end. You know, these are the types of year end reviews that really need to go to the greater, the greater group of the PACT Conference because, you know, California doesn't get a lot of credit for the water management that it's doing across the state, so.
Okay, good. Later that day, luncheon with Metropolitan?
Let's see, Costello Estrada was there. Yeah, so we met with some board directors and some key staff members. It was good to have lunch and talk over some successful programs that we have with our banking program and our partnership with Met. So it was, it was good.
Good. Looks like there was a reception with Met later that day. It's a pretty standard event, right?
Yeah.
They do that every year. And then there was a lunch with San Diego the following day.
Yeah, so we had Jim Madaffur, Dan Danham, and.
Kelly, Kelly Rogers?
No, Kelly was not there, the GM, I'm blanking on her name right now.
Oh, Sandy.
Sandy. Sandy were there, Costello and I were there and talking about the canal lining and the canal storage project and so forth. So that was a, that was a good get together with them from that perspective.
Great, yeah, and I just have to say, I'm sorry I missed it. I was planning to go and just couldn't rally. I was still getting over whatever the ridiculous thing I had. Yeah, I was having trouble sustaining a day, you know, without taking lots of naps. So.
So the next day on December 21st, had a prep discussion with staff. Robert and I are tomorrow afternoon are going to. are, tomorrow afternoon, are going to be addressing the Coachella Valley Gulf and Water Task Force and their summit. They have a big group of people. It's a very, be very highly attended
I'll be there.
Group. And we're going to go and tell of the dire situation on the Colorado River and make the case that there is, there are opportunities to participate in item, or Part Two of the U.S. Bureau's More Durable Conservation Programs, and that if they could get their projects together, that they could be included in a submittal to the Bureau to have system water developed with conservation on their project. So that's what we're looking at.
Yeah, good. Good luck on that, you and Robert.
Yeah.
Tomorrow. Yep. That's it. Any other meetings that are not listed? I didn't have any. Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve per DM for the meetings that were reported on? I'll move. Go ahead, John. Motion, I'll second your motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed. General Manager Report?
Yes, sir, just quickly, recap on COVID. We've got four qualifying cases right now. We did have a little bit of a spike, and there's quite a bit of concern on the East Coast, as you all probably know about the new variant. Not yet in California, as far as I know. About 75% of our staff have recovered from qualifying cases, and about 84% of them have documented proof of vaccination status. We've got five folks off work right now because of COVID-related situations, and we have got six qualifying cases so far for the month of January. The only other thing I would have is to encourage the Board to think about some new GM performance goals coming up. We'll kick off a closed session at our next meeting to start that, if the agenda's not too loaded. We do try and get those in place, hopefully no later than March. We have done it as early as February, but we've never gotten them in place in January. So maybe that would be a goal. I don't know. I don't really control
Give the Board a goal. I get it.
That's all I got, sir.
Thank you. Jeff, Council?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to remind all of us about the ability to have virtual meetings in 2023. The Governor's COVID declaration of a COVID emergency, state of emergency, he has announced will expire at the end of February. There are two elements for using an AB 361 virtual meeting, which we're using now. One is that actual declaration by the Governor, and two, a recommendation or requirement for social distancing. So at the end of February, the first prong of those two prongs for having virtual meetings will no longer be in effect. So what does that mean? That means that even though AB 361 itself runs for another year, the two criteria, one will be missing. So at that point, the Board will need to go to the old rules, which are still in effect, which would require posting the location on the agenda, having an agenda at wherever you're located, public access wherever you're located, or using AB 2449. But AB 2449 does allow for virtual meetings in very limited circumstances. And you can only use it for the just cause provision twice a year. And those just cause provisions have to do with the need for childcare, you get sick, an emergency, things of that nature. So it's very limited. So I just wanted to remind all of you that by the end of February, we will be going back to our old process. And you obviously can continue to have live streaming. That's certainly always recommended. We've been doing that even before the pandemic, so that can continue. Now, if you wanted to have virtual access for the public after the end of February, not for board members, just for the public, you can do that. But you'd have to go through the same rules of making sure it's two-way, that they can hear all the time. If there's any disruption, we have to stop the meeting, things of that nature. So just wanted to remind you that at the end of next month, AB 361 will no longer be available. So we'll have to go back to having all meetings in person, or using the old rules of posting an agenda at your location, which you can certainly do if you're at a conference or things of that nature, or using AB 2449. But that's going to be very sparingly eligible for all of you to use. So just wanted to give you that reminder. Thank you.
So as far as the old rules, when we post the agenda, that has to be done three days in advance? Or can, like, let's say I got ill the day before the meeting, and I want to stay home, and, but it's still, it's in the meeting. Can we, can I post a new agenda?
So that would fall under the just cause under AB 2449. The Brown Act requires that we post the agenda minimum 72 hours in advance. However, maybe two years ago or so, the Board had directed us to post a week in advance. So now our practice is that we typically post the Tuesday before the meeting. However, I do have up to the Friday before the meeting to make an amendment and still meet the Brown Act requirements.
So we're talking about two different things. One is if you're sick at the last minute, that may qualify you for AB 2449, which does not require any posting of an agenda.
Yeah, but, okay, I get that. But let's say I'm sick three times, and on the third time, or I have, I have meetings that I'm, or I have childcare the first two times, now I'm sick. So on that third time, you're saying I would not be eligible to attend the meeting?
Under 2449, we could still post an agenda at your location and have public access at your location.
But she's telling me that you two are saying different things. She's saying she needs a three-day window, and you're saying I can do it.
Well, I don't think they've answered the question yet. So how many days in advance do you have to post the agenda if you're?
If you're, if I understand correctly, and Jeff, please correct me, if we are not using AB 2449, it is 72 hours. Under AB 2449, you have up to three instances where we do not need to do the 72 hours. So yes, after the third just cause, we would have to revert to the traditional Brown Act requirements.
So a realistic, excuse me, a realistic thing would be, let's say I have a conference out of town, and I want to attend a Tuesday board meeting. I travel to a hotel on Monday. I'm not there three days in advance. How do I post the agenda?
We could do an AB 2449 under just cause. So each board member gets up to three
Even just for a business meeting, you can get just cause?
Okay. So let me try and make it even more complicated. John knows he's going to the conference. When you post the agenda, you can post that location.
That's absolutely easy. When we know in advance, it's easy. It's anything less than the 72-hour notice that forces us into the AB 2449.
And those remote locations have to be in the United States?
They have to be open and accessible to the public. In the United States, I'll leave that to Jeff.
In the olden days, using the old rules, which are always available, you could be in Europe.
You could?
Yes.
Okay. Outside the United States is okay?
Right. In the olden days, if you knew you were going to be out of town or at a conference, we would put the location of your hotel on the agenda.
Yeah, it sounds like
If it's a last-minute thing, we can't do that.
So it sounds like, once you know where you're going to be, let the clerk of the Board know so that it can be included in the agenda.
Right. What's confusing is everyone, not everyone, there's a lot of people who think AB 2449 is going to be really useful and used all the time. It's very rare that that's going to even be workable. So that's why we have to go back to the old rule.
Yeah, I think where your frustration comes, and I hear your frustration, Jeff, with us, I understand the rules, but I'm just trying to figure out how to work them to my best advantage, and you're not helping me out with trying to
I'm not frustrated. No, no, no. It's, we will work with you. When you know you're going to be gone, we will work with you.
Where's our state lobby team? Can we get this changed?
We, you know, I've got to say, to that end, the state lobby team, is that the rules through COVID, I think were very helpful to this Board, who, when required, we didn't come. And when, and I don't think there was an abuse of the system to use the COVID rules for meetings. Sometimes we had three, many times we had five. I just think that those types of rules are very beneficial to the Board and the public, to be flexible in a world that is very dynamic.
And this doesn't make you feel any better, but there were previous laws or bills that would have been more expansive, to your point. But for whatever reason, lobbying efforts or whatever, they were reduced down to AB 2449. That's why we're recommending we use the old rules whenever possible. Just let us know, we will work with you.
Okay.
I will add that there are various associations that I'm part of, the Clerks Association, League of Cities, and so forth, that are working to try and amend AB 2449, just because of the complexity of it. So we're hoping that we can get through, that some of the associations will get through and have some amendments to the bill.
Fair enough. Thank you.
But don't worry, we'll find a way, because we'll, you'll know in advance, and we can work with the agenda, whatever needs to be done.
Yeah, good.
I'm not frustrated. I'm just trying to help.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Next time, maybe a PowerPoint.
No.
No, I, no, the discussions.
Do we have any departmental reports today?
I don't see any, sir, no.
Fair enough. At this time, the Board will recess into closed session to consider the two items on the agenda. We will reconvene back in open session to report out when we're finished.
We're not. This shouldn't take
Good. All right. So we're back in open session. The regular meeting is hereby reconvened. We do not have any reportable action from closed session, and with no further business, we are adjourned.